Marlis, can you hear me?
On AAA before it's over.
Right.
And we can, we can always move around after it starts.
Right.
Wow, two of my brackets are actually doing really well.
What's that?
Two of my brackets are doing really well.
Okay, I call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, March 22, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Hanson?
Here.
Dave Nielsen?
Here.
Sandy Eric?
Here.
Luke Spence?
Here.
First item.
Barb Mitten, I didn't do Barb.
Sorry. Okay, so first item is approved, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Dane, Jason, discussion on the agenda. None, we will go ahead and take a vote.
Hi.
That'd be two though, Luke and Barb.
Can you guys hear me?
Barely.
Barely. Did you get Luke there, Karen? Did you get Luke's?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And we'll move on to the public hearings. The first one is fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in that public hearing? Karen, did we receive any comment?
No.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And move on to resolution number 87, 2020-2021, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Question on the budget resolution. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
Okay, then that is approved. It takes us to public hearing B, capital improvement plan fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. We're opening that public hearing. Is anyone here to speak in that public hearing? And Karen, did we receive any comment?
No comments.
Okay, with no comment, we will close the public hearing. Move to resolution number 88, 2020-2021, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2021-2022 capital improvement plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Sandy and Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us to item C, sewer revenue loan agreement, SRF wastewater treatment facility phase two. We'll open that public hearing on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement. Is anyone here to speak in that public hearing? Karen, did we receive comment?
No comment.
With no comment, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Move to resolution number 89, 2020-2021, resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Dane? Discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
And that is approved. Takes us into the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
And that is approved, which takes us into the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. And first up, we will have our fire and EMS director, Ray Reynolds, with a probationary firefighter swearing in.
Thank you, council. This is, we, as you know, we've been collecting a paragraph from the folks that get on the fire department, sort of who they are, what their background is. It started with Jim Walker as a council person. I kind of want to know who these people were when they got on the fire department. So I'd like to read the paragraph that Devin submitted. My name is Devin Dubendorf. I'm 27 years old and currently work at Verbio. My wife Brianna and I have three beautiful children, Jay six, Lane five, and Macy three. We have lived in Nevada since 2017. I've been a part of the Nevada community since 2005, when my brother and I joined the Nevada Community School District. My purpose for joining the fire department is to get back to the community I've been a part of for 16 years. My first experience with the fire department was in 2015, when my late brother was in a car accident. All of his doctors said that he should not have made it to the hospital. I believe the quick actions of the first responders is what gave my family a chance to say goodbye to river. At that moment, I knew I wanted to be a part of the department and provide the same level of care to our community. I would like to thank the members of the Fire Association for all they do and for providing me an opportunity to fulfill my dreams. I will just tell you that when Devin first applied, I was like, well, I met him once. I think he'll be okay. And I've really come to appreciate his enthusiasm and energy on the fire department and what he brings to the fire department. So with Devin being on the fire department, we are sitting right at that 49 range. We had a couple retirements last month or the month before, so we're still hovering right at that 49 mark. So with that, Devin, if you come forward, then the mayor will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Devin Dubendorf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of the office of firefighter.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, and our newest firefighter, Devin.
Okay. That continues on in our public forum. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the council during the public forum? Seeing none, we will close the public forum and move into old business. There's old business A, discussion and appropriate follow-up for capacity limits at Gates Hall. And so Tim is gonna come forward. This is coming in front of you because the previous guidance document that was approved had an 8% benchmark and 50% capacity. And since this falls outside of that, I wanted, since we had time for the full council to make the determination, we wanted to do that rather than rely on the other emergency powers. So we'll have Tim kind of lay that out.
Okay, thank you. Earlier, I think was it last week, I sent you an email with just a little bit of an update from some events that we have coming up. As we get into May and June, we had two larger events. One was the Ames Coin Club. The other one was a wedding. The wedding has postponed due to COVID, so we don't have to worry about that one. The other one is the Ames Coin Club. They typically meet in February, but because of COVID, pushed it to May, hoping for some better circumstances with COVID all around. I reached out to the president of the coin club today. He is traveling and on the road, so he's unable to be here or zoom in. But during our visit today, and as I kind of shared with you in the email last week, they they're fine. They can live within the 50% capacity, which is what we have at Gates Hall right now. They do use the auditorium. That would be a capacity of 150, at 50%. The typical craft or coin show would have 30 to 35 vendors, typically about two people, you know, per group. So probably more of a husband-wife situation. The, the people that come to the event aren't, you know, just, people don't just stroll in. There's not a huge number of people that stroll in. The people that show up at the coin show are there for a specific reason. I mean, they've got a special interest in something that they're, you know, specifically looking for. So through our discussion, he thought that, you know, at any given time, they might have, if they have 35 vendors, two people per vendor, that'd be 70 people, leaving 80 from the public. The times that they would maybe have in excess of that 80 number would maybe be the first hour or two max of the show itself, which it runs two days. It runs a Saturday and a Sunday. So at the end of the day, he really didn't think it was a huge problem. But of course, if you're a, if you're a vendor, you've paid money to have your booth there, you want the opportunity to have as many people as you can come and, you know, view what you have for sale. So the distancing thing, I think, is, is easy enough from a vendor standpoint. Typically, each vendor probably has two tables, which are eight-foot tables or six-foot tables. So they can maintain their, their six-foot distance. You know, if there's two vendors at one, one booth, they're probably coming from the same household. So I don't see that as an issue. The biggest challenge would be the people that come in and out, and they're there to, you know, to look at what might be for sale. The masking policy, I think, is easy. I don't, we've never had anybody question us or give us pushback on requiring masks. So if there's a desire to, you know, raise that limit beyond 50%, maybe 75% or whatever you want to do, 100, it doesn't matter, you know, really. To us, I think, as far as that event is concerned, just because I don't think we're going to have a huge number there. The other events that we have, typically school administration, park and rec meetings, park board meetings, small business type meetings, the foundation, things like that. Story County, they still, you know, stick to that six-foot social distance works out fine. We haven't had any issues with any of them. So this would be the only one that probably you would be creating an exception for or changing, changing the rule for. So again, I don't see any issue with the six-foot distancing for the vendors, and I think all will wear masks, so I don't view that as an issue. The people that come in and out, I don't think, you typically have one person at a, at a booth, you know, looking at stuff. So it's not like there's a whole group of people congregated around one, one vendor, one table, so. But again, at the end of the day, talking with the president of the club, he was, you know, he was okay if you wanted to leave it at 50% that they would work within those parameters. But, you know, as anybody who's paying to put on a show or an event, you know, you want to be able to have as many people as you can, so. Are there questions that I could answer?
Counsel, any questions for Tim or thoughts?
Tim, this is Luke. What's your comfort level at what we should be doing at Gates? Not so much for this event, but in general, moving forward.
Luke, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you very well.
What's, what's your opinion of what we should, are you okay with keeping it where it's at? Do you think we're, we're okay with easing up on some of the capacity limits or what? What's your opinion moving forward? Not just a specific event, but the facility in general?
Looking ahead, we've got basically three more months, really, that's going to impact us. And looking through our reservation book that we have, things we have in place right now, I think if you wanted to ease up on those restrictions, I don't think it poses any problem for us.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say, I don't, I, as of right now, I don't see a reason why we can, we need to keep our 50% rule in. We've been well under the 5% range for a while now. If we're gonna keep the masks and the six-foot distance, you know, request that people keep their six-foot distance, I would be fine with removing restrictions on percentages.
I would agree. I think all along, our biggest concern has been, or at least my biggest concern, I guess, is not overwhelming the public health system, not having our hospitals overrun with people and unable to do, unable to provide care for patients. And the vaccines obviously getting out there. The elderly, the at-risk, the essential workers in the food supply chain, all those types of things. They're out there getting their vaccines right now. Governor says by April, Iowans, all Iowans should be able to at least have the opportunity to get the vaccine. And I think President Biden himself said May 1st for the country. So with this not even being until May, I would like them to at least be able to have the ability to, to prepare adequately. So I would, I would support going to 100% and requiring the masks and the distance.
It will be towards the end of May. I should have clarified that, so. You know, and if we're still trying to maintain some distance, that will limit some of the capacity anyway, just because it just goes with, with the spacing issue.
Yeah, Story County Health doesn't have a problem with it. Dr. Paskin, I mean, they all, the experts say they're comfortable with it. They've been going by the rate, like I said, under 5% for 14, over 14 day, you know, 14 days.
I'm good with easing it up, too.
I think this comes into play for us, too, from the pavilion standpoint, as well as we near the graduations at the end of May and stuff as well. So it'll be nice to have that guidance as we, as we get into that season.
So on the agenda, it just says discussion of Gates Hall. Can we broaden that conversation beyond that?
I would limit it just to Gates Hall, but if you want to give direction, we can put it back on the agenda for another discussion.
And in far as that, two-year other document had standards above 8%, but we don't have anything on the books for below. So I think council could probably allow staff to manage that if Aaron's okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, you can give direction, and I, I think we just, does council want to talk about the other, the other spaces or just provide?
I think that would be a good conversation to have sometime sooner than later for families who are trying to plan for graduation parties and such, yeah.
I would just add that to the next agenda for discussion.
For all city facilities?
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion on this discussion to take the capacity limit off of Gates Hall.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion. That was Brian and Jason.
Can we include in that, Brian, that the six-foot social distancing and masks are all still required as well, or are we assuming that still, or?
It's already required. We're just removing the capacity restriction.
Okay.
Other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
That is approved. Takes us to new business, approve amendment number three to the water tower option and lease agreement with Selco Partnership Verizon Wireless.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian, was that Sandy? Okay, Brian and Sandy. There will be one nice thing when we can finally get rid of these barriers. I'll know who's. Okay, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us to new business B, approve purchase of grounds maintenance equipment for the parks and rec slash cemetery departments. Hanson.
In your council packet is, is an action form for the purchase of two zero-turn mowers and a utility vehicle. These are pieces of grounds maintenance equipment that we use regularly throughout our, our operations. The, the zero-turn mowers, there's one for the parks department, and there's one for the cemetery. They both involve trade-in of existing units. And as you can see in the action form, I sent out to three different vendors for those, two of which replied with Vanwall being significantly lower than the others. The utility vehicle, I kind of put that out two different ways, as a two-person unit or a four-person unit. There are advantages to us to have a four-person unit as we move crews around doing ball diamonds in different projects. So after getting those back in, though, it became apparent that, and I bid it out as well with a trade of an existing unit, and then just a straight-out purchase. But it became apparent when prices came back that we were going to have to trade in one of our existing units, just to keep the price within what we had budgeted. So the, the one thing I would point out on the utility vehicle is, as you look at those quote forms, I had two returned, Vanwall Equipment and Bobcat of Ames. The Bobcat of Ames unit did not meet all the specs because it did not have the front fender guards and the rear cargo box guards. I specifically put those on just because it's nice to protect the unit. It gives that unit extra protection. You know, we're loading stuff in and out of them all the time. A lot of times, we're driving them in some pretty tight spaces, things of that nature. So when, when I specked that out, I did put those in the specs. The Kubota unit does not have those. They could possibly get aftermarket ones, but he wasn't sure. So with that piece of information in mind, I went back and I looked at if we took those fender guards and cargo box guards off of the John Deere model, and then I'm comparing more apples to apples, it brought the price of the, the John Deere unit down to within about less than $300 of the Bobcat of Ames, the Kubota model, which according to our city purchasing policy, that would then be within the 5% of keeping that unit local for purchase. So as you can see through a recommendation on the action form, it would be then to purchase two zero-turn mowers from Vanwall and purchase the utility vehicle through Vanwall. And I would like to purchase the utility vehicle with those fender guards and cargo box guards on it.
That's the four-person unit.
That is a four-person unit. That is correct. We would be trading in a two-person
Right.
unit that we have. I might answer.
Is that the price difference because you're adding two more seats that you didn't have budgeted?
Pardon?
Is that the price difference? You said you didn't have it budgeted for the
Yeah, it's just a little bit, just a little bit bigger unit, so it costs just a little bit more. So, but there, there are advantages to having that four-person, person unit. So actually, when we've hosted some of our national softball tournaments, we've actually used one of those from John Deere just during that tournament time, and it really is advantageous to us. So we do have experience in, in having them around.
So Bobcat doesn't have that option to put that stuff on there?
He thought he could maybe do an aftermarket, but he wasn't sure.
Yeah, okay.
I'd move to approve option one.
Second.
Jason and Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hi.
This group takes us to item C, which is approve amendment to the Pepsi agreement for the park and rec department.
One year ago, we signed an agreement with Pepsi. It was a three-year agreement with them to provide beverage product for us to sell at the fourplex and as well as the aquatic center. With COVID, obviously shutting things down last year, we didn't sell any product. So the representatives from Pepsi had inquired about adding an amendment to that agreement and just basically extending it one year. So year one would actually start this year instead of last year. They'll still keep their pricing at the start the same as what it would have been last year. So it just adds that one year, and it keeps it as a three-year agreement, so we're totally good with that, if you would be. Pepsi has treated us really well, so we don't have any issues with that.
We'll move to approve option one.
Thank you.
And Sandy? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm not biased at all. I'm not biased at all either.
Hey.
Hey, Tim, I was gonna ask you just quickly, I know they have the quoted price, they're gonna extend it a year, but I know there was the option that they could go up 4%. Are they gonna go up 4% from last year, or have they said yet?
It is my understanding. I, I did, I asked him, I said, are we gonna start at the same price we were gonna start at last year? He said, we can start at the same price we're gonna start.
Okay, okay, okay.
So that is my understanding.
Okay.
That moves us into reports, starting with Jordan.
Other than my report that I sent to you guys, I didn't have anything, unless you have any questions for me, I can answer.
I can also repeat all of that, too, if you didn't hear me.
Luke, did you hear it, Jordan?
I did, yeah. His voice carries well.
Sounds good. Okay, council, any questions for Jordan? Okay, then for my report, a few things to touch on. One, we'd had discussion before about how the, the state didn't have our particularly water wastewater certified staff in their essential workers bucket for COVID vaccine. Well, now that the state's opened it up to Group 1C, the city employees that qualify for 1C were offered vaccines. So those So those that were wanting it have gotten it that are in that group. And then hopefully it'll be all, everybody after April 5th, and we can get any other employees in that we needed after that time. With that topic, we had the community coffee with, with Dr., it was Leeds and with Teresa from Story County Public Health about COVID vaccine and what was going on in the county and had quite a few people watch that. So hopefully that helped. Also, on that topic, we received word today that at the pharmacy, we'll be receiving from the federal pharmacy program, 1,170 doses of Pfizer, and our plan is to work with Story County Medical Center on Saturday to offer that out to groups 1C in the community. So you can watch for that announcement and scheduling information to come out, hopefully in the next day or two. So we're just finalizing some details on that and working with Tim, who's graciously, speaking of Gates Hall, allowing us to use Gates Hall for vaccine deployment. So hopefully we can take care of a lot of folks in the community that way as well. So moving, moving along one group at a time. So otherwise, the 2040 I mentioned last time, we do need to schedule a public meeting. I drug my feet on getting that done because I knew there was a potential to get the Pfizer vaccine and wanted to make sure we didn't double book something. So probably be late April then that we'll look to schedule the 2040 public meeting. And I think I spoke to John Hall earlier. We were gonna throw out to see if the 24th, 24th worked with the rest of our steering committee. And then if that works, we'll let everybody know. Alliant was in town last week to look downtown about burying the electric wires behind all the downtown blocks. So Sean was there and talked to them about that. So hopefully we can work out some sort of mutual agreement with that. So not sure, not sure what'll happen there, but it definitely, as we heard during the public meeting here from the business owners, there's a desire to do that now while it's torn up. And then what I didn't realize, because we asked him a year ago, and I think we talked about it at a meeting a year ago, but there are businesses that are trying to do things with fire escapes and whatnot, and they can't because of where those wires are. So if we can get them out of the way, then that'll improve the goal of improving the access to the upstairs of those buildings. And then lastly, the board of supervisors meeting for Story County went really well, and Jordan and John and Tim was there and myself, I think it was the four of us that, that participated. So answered the questions they have, and Story County is supportive of our fieldhouse project and our application for the CAT grant. So those of you that, if you speak to our supervisors, make sure you express your appreciation for their support, because without it, we would not be able to keep going on this project. So it's a really critical piece. Without a significant county support, we probably wouldn't get the CAT grant from the state. And obviously, that's a big portion of the project. So it's very good to see that they were willing to support the project. Okay, that's what I have. Unless you have anything for me. Okay, counsel reports.
I would just note, last time we talked about the Healthy Hometown, and that we really are gonna meet tomorrow, so that continues on. Also, when we're talking about grants, they have quite a lovely granting program, Wellmark does, through their foundation. And I happen to be doing reviews right now. So I see projects that look like things that we'll want to do. So I would guess we would, as we complete this program, we'll have some ideas of things that we should be applying for. And they're, just to give you an idea, that I'm reviewing the large grants, and they're $100,000 grants for big projects. So it's not, you know, it's not anything to sneeze at. So interesting.
Thanks, Sandy. Other reports? Okay, and we'll go back to public works and have Jeremy come up.
Thanks, counsel. I don't have much. Just a few things are going on. We started putting gravel on a, on a gravel roads, the gravel streets. And the wastewater and water plants are just routine, routine daily maintenance. And I extended a job offer today for the Streets Department, and we're gonna interview one tomorrow for the wastewater. So that's all I have.
For Jeremy?
Any questions? Nobody wants to know who?
They wanna wait till they accept it?
Accepted.
Who?
Nate Hall, Nathan Hall.
Thanks, Jeremy. I'll go to fire any MS and have Ray come back up.
Just real quickly, the fuel pumps are working great. So we've taken our big apparatus there.
You hear that, Jeremy? They're working great.
You're welcome. And then I was gonna point out, if you, during vaccination of our community, if you want assistance from our paramedics, just reach out to us.
Yeah, we will let you know. I know Story was gonna check to see if they had their standby ambulance that could be nearby, but I'll mention that, too, because that would be good.
We'll just talk to Dr. O and make sure that we're covered, but it's a standing order, so it would be, so.
Yeah, that would be good. Tim, anything additional?
I'm good, unless you guys have questions for me.
Okay. Then how about if we go to HR Green, because I don't want to forget.
I am here. Good evening, everyone. It's been kind of a busy time lately. We were helping Sean with a couple of site plans for, for the USDA facility on Fossett Parkway, and then also for Rabio's expansion to put in railroad loading facilities northwest of their current plant. And in addition to that, we have, we have completed the draft plans for the plans and specifications for the well number four abandonment. And another water item is that we're scheduling a workshop with the Water Department staff for the risk and resilience assessment. And then both of those had a, had a kickoff, you know, a month or so ago. We are, we're making progress on the plans for the asphalt street work, which includes the reconstruction of the 11th Street from U Avenue to W Avenue, in addition to the Mill and Phil on Lincoln Highway in the vicinity of Osage. And then the overlay work and a portion of reconstruction on S14 north of M Avenue. Recently, Manass was able to go in and do some, drill some cores on Lincoln Highway and S14 to help us determine what the underlying base material is like. And so that's going to provide some benefits. It looks like we may be doing an all asphalt project, including that portion of S14 that we're, we're going to be reconstructing that goes under the WP track. So that hasn't quite been decided, but we may be doing that. In addition to that, we, we completed some plans and other details for a potential electric vehicle charging station in the city hall parking lot. Those, that plan and cost estimate would be used to, to apply for grants. And so that was provided to the city last week. With that, we've got, we've got a number of things going on, and I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Larry, this is Jason Sands, so maybe Mike can answer this question better. In the packet, there was questions about going down S14 with the trunk line. Is that gonna be a big hiccup, a little hiccup? There are some questions about the county had issues.
So, yeah, there was a letter, or Jordan received a letter from the county engineer with some questions regarding the plan to put the trunk sewer on S14. We have a meeting scheduled with the county engineer on Thursday of this week to go over those. I've talked with Jordan through some of the concerns that were raised in that letter. We have responses prepared, and we're gonna sit down with the county engineer to kind of address some of those questions that he has. I don't see any of those questions that he has brought up as anything that would derail our project. I think everything can be accommodated and meet the needs of the county to construct the trunk sewer along S14 and, and be able to place it there. So I don't, I don't see at this time that there's any major issues there that to be concerned about right now.
Okay.
And then the, the last thing I wanted to mention, too, I think at the last council meeting, Charlie Good was there from Good and Quick and indicated his displeasure with narrowing up the east driveway into his facility. And I visited with, with Sean Cole about that recently, and we're working on a compromise and, you know, and we'll try to make, we'll try to make it acceptable to everyone. We'll negotiate with Charlie. And it, I don't really see any big problems, and we'll, we'll try to address his concerns. So if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. Glad that Mike was on the call.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Let's see if, we'll go to police, see if Sergeant Says Media has anything for us.
Um, not much. Still hiring, still looking. On four. Rat.
Any good prospects?
Maybe. We had seven, down to one. We're gonna open up testing again in May or April test May. So advertising for the new wage will help. But we're in the same boat as everybody across the country. Tough.
Josh? Thank you.
Karen?
I attended the Dorsey and Whitney annual training for municipal bond disclosures and actually sent it out to you today, because you guys are required to review that as well. So if you wouldn't mind reviewing that, and if you have any questions, let me know. I also sent the link for the webinar, too, if you'd rather watch it or look at the worksheets, either way.
Counsel, anything for Karen? Okay, Sean?
Well, we've started the downtown project, and things are going relatively well. We're making good progress along the alley back behind Sixth on the, on the west side. We are gonna be working on hooking up all the, all the roof trains as we go along. We did remove the alley to the north. We did that because if we waited on that, we would be exiting those, their trucks out onto Lincoln Way. And so we decided to go ahead and remove that alley now, and then we will, we rock that back and open that back up. So that alley is back, back open. Otherwise, we are just working along. I did get an email back from Blaine, who said that Mason would get ahold of us and let us know what their decision was about Alliant. I did talk to several electricians who would have to be involved. We definitely have some electricians involved. And I kind of got a feel for them about what their availability would be and maybe some of the costs involved. So we're, I guess if Alliant comes back with a positive message, then we'll, we'll move forward with that and get that done, too, as we go along.
But that's. Sean, they got K tore up. Do they have the alley behind, by the bank tore up or to the, between K and Lincoln Way?
We have from J to Lincoln Way, the alleys are tore up on the west side, and then also K.
Okay.
K, anyways, or the, the alley north of K, between K and Lincoln Way, is open back up. Like I said, we just removed that because otherwise we'd be emptying trucks on the Lincoln Way when we did the removal. So we've tried to kind of avoid that. But, so we really removed it, and we closed it for a couple of days and now it's back open.
Have we gotten any load limit signs or truck route signs up yet?
We have not. I did send an email to the, to the DOT. But I don't know that we were planning on getting signs up or what our plans are with that.
I thought that was what we were planning on doing, was it not? After we changed the truck route?
Thought that would be news, huh? Yeah.
That's the impression I had, anyway. I seen a big old truck going down Sixth Street today, so.
I did, too. It's disappointing. But I did send it out to the DOT, and hopefully they'll distribute that amongst their, one of their GPS groups. And hopefully I wouldn't make that from, from mapping or limited, I guess.
Okay. Yeah. There's no signs that you got an excuse for. No sign.
What's the timeframe for tearing up K between Sixth and Seventh?
It will probably be sometime, weather permitting. I would think probably later in June or in July.
So if we're playing in a race that would kind of go through that area, we should be clear for April?
Yeah, oh, yeah, in April, right. And just let us know, we can rock stuff back or do things, you know.
I think we should be okay.
Stuff back toward.
We're doing the donut dash again, so we just want to make sure we can be by the bakery.
Anything else for Sean? Okay. That takes us to Aaron.
Something for me?
Anything else then, before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Okay.
Dane and Jason, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.